I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, October 5th, 2020. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back, I guess, in person, seeing everyone's smiling faces. Mr. Tebow on the big widescreen over there. Roll call, please, Ms. Genther. Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access this meeting via our livestream at youtube.com/DHSTVmedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast in DC TV Channels 9 and 18 on the following days. Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. Once again, thank everyone. Thank Mr. Galishaw, Mr. Parati in the background there for putting this together. I feel like I'm in a regular TV studio here.
Absolutely.
So typically at this time, we allow 10 minutes for public comment, for anyone wishing to speak on tonight of any of tonight's agenda items. If you have not already had the opportunity to review our agenda and submit an email to Kate Genther or Kathleen Genther at Dartmouth Schools.org, we ask you to do so now. At this point in time, Kate, do we have any comments on any of tonight's agenda items? No? Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of September 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes and a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 14th, 2020.
So move, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes and a second by Mrs. Amorall. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. In addition, I'll entertain a motion. I guess we'll have to take these separately because we do have regular and executive session. So our regular session minutes of the joint meeting with the select board for September 21st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give the... So we had a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes and a second by Mrs. Amarall. On the motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And last but not least, Chair, will entertain a motion for the executive session minutes of September 21st, 2020.
So move, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Nunes and a second by Mrs. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, my fellow colleagues, for that. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gifford for a presentation this evening on tonight for the Dartmouth High School AP report.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very happy to have Mr. Tebow, the principal, here tonight to present that report. As you recall, we invested some time and energy and money into having Mass Insight help us with the Advanced Placement Program last year, and we have some positive results to report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Tebow to do that.
Good evening, Mr. Tebow.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so tonight, I'm here to present on the Advanced Placement results from this past school year. I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, thank you to the school committee. Thank you to Dr. Gifford for allowing me to present this evening. I have to admit that I'm extremely excited to be talking about something that's not related to COVID-19 for the first time in many, many months. So thank you for having me, and I really appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. So tonight, I want to start by just saying that it really, truly takes a community. So I'd like to offer special thanks to, you know, a number of different people or groups of people within the Dartmouth High School community, but I want to start with our students. Our students have really risen to the occasion over the past couple of years. We've challenged them to take the most rigorous coursework available to them, and we've, you know, really pushed them to stretch themselves and reach beyond their comfort zone. And I think you'll see in a few slides here that they've truly risen to the occasion, that they've done just that. I also want to thank, obviously, the Dartmouth School Committee, as well as Dr. Gifford and Central Office, because last year or two years ago at this time now, we came to you looking for your support in order to partner with Mass Insight, and I think that they have made a huge... Having them as a partner has been a huge benefit at Dartmouth High School, so I certainly, you know, appreciate the support from the school committee, as well as from Central Office and Dr. Gifford. In addition to that, I wanted to recognize the AP Coordinator at Dartmouth High School, which is our Associate Principal, Rachel Chavie. She has done a fantastic job in terms of providing leadership to our lead teachers and to our AP teachers and just our students as well, particularly this past year through the pandemic. And then, again, I don't want to miss anyone, so you can certainly see the slide here. It really does take a village, and each one of these groups, even if I didn't, you know, go into detail, each one of them has played a critical role in what you're about to hear tonight in terms of our results and the status of our AP program. So just to begin a little bit with why Advanced Placement Coursework matters, because it does matter. And again, this is not in order of importance, but first off, it provides our students the opportunity to earn valuable credit and/or placement in college. Students who earn a qualifying score, which is, you know, it can vary from institution to institution, but generally speaking, a three or above earns, you know, some college credit. And so that's one reason why, right? Another reason that AP is important is because it supports students in mastering rigorous college-level content and skills. Our mission at Dartmouth High School is to ensure all students are college and career-ready at the end of their four years at Dartmouth High School, and there's no better way for us to demonstrate that than by seeing a number of our students participate successfully in our Advanced Placement Coursework. Obviously, from a student perspective, there's a benefit in that it strengthens their transcript in the college admission process. I'll speak to that in just a second. But in my opinion, this perhaps, this last bullet is perhaps the most important reason why we really promote Advanced Placement Coursework, and that is that it can potentially unlock student interest and passion in a particular college major or a particular career field. And so that's really, you know, what high school is all about, is providing students an opportunity to find themselves, find the areas that they're most passionate about, and we're really confident that Advanced Placement Coursework is an opportunity to do that. So in terms of the college admissions perspective, this is a recent survey that was done by the National Association of College Admissions Counselors, and they rank a number of different factors that go into the consideration to admit or deny a student entrance into their college. And the first, the top three, all are strengthened by Advanced Placement Coursework if a student engages in them. First one being grades in all courses, the second being grades in college prep courses. Of course, college prep meaning, you know, AP is exactly that, college prep. And then finally, the strength of curriculum. And the thing about Advanced Placement Coursework is it's nationally normed, right? So while honors-level coursework is great, there's a high degree of variability from high school to high school, even within a high school, there's variability. Advanced Placement Coursework offers a standard and a norm that really sets potentially a student's transcript apart from their peers. The other thing, although it's not tied directly to Advanced Placement Coursework, I want to point out, and just because, you know, and the hope that some parents might be watching tonight, and some students certainly, we get hung up a lot of time on class rank, and I would just point out that in the top 10 factors ranked by college admissions officers, you can see class rank is down near the bottom of the top 10 list here, and significantly so. So I just point that out because I know that students stress about class rank, and I can't stress enough that, while important, it's not even up in the top few factors here that are considered by college admissions officers when admitting a student. So let's take a look a little bit at, I thought I'd give just an overview about the Dartmouth High School Advanced Placement Program. And starting with this, we offer 18, or last year, I should say, we offered 18 different Advanced Placement Courses across virtually every department, with the only exception being our World Language Department. And I'm happy to report that this year, we've added AP Spanish as a course offering once again. So this year, every department is, you know, has some Advanced Placement Coursework that they offer. I think it's important, that's an important point to emphasize, because it shows that there really is something for everyone at Dartmouth High School. You know, we have a number of art Advanced Placement Courses, as well as, you know, you know, across all of the other areas as well. And certainly, when folks think of AP, a lot of times, we forget some of those elective areas like art or World Language for that matter, where our students, you know, some of our students really find themselves and their passion in those areas as well. And at Dartmouth High School, I'm proud to be able to say we offer a tremendous variety of AP courses across all departments. Last year, we were able to offer three new Advanced Placement Courses at Dartmouth High School. They included AP Calculus BC. So we had always offered AP Calculus AB at Dartmouth High School, but last year, we opened up a section of BC for students, or a couple of sections, actually. And again, we continue to offer AP Calculus BC this year, and I think that that speaks to some of the work we've done to kind of expand our coursework so that students can, in their senior year, get to that point and be successful. We also offered AP Physics for the first time at Dartmouth High School, an AP Seminar we were able to offer last year as well. And I'm happy to report, all three of those courses continue to run this year as well. So as we've expanded, you'll see the enrollment in a second and how dramatically it's increased over the last couple of years. As we've expanded enrollment to our most rigorous courses, to our AP courses, we've also had to expand and build capacity within our teaching ranks. And so I'm really proud of this as well, that last year, for the first time, eight new teachers were teaching Advanced Placement Courses. And it should be noted that it takes a couple of years for a teacher to really get their legs under them in terms of teaching AP coursework, which is why I kind of, I thought it was important to point out this fact, that we had a number of teachers teaching AP for the first time. And again, something that speaks to the concerted effort we've put in to kind of really, you know, build and expand our AP coursework. That's a good segue into the next part of our report here, which is our participation trends at Dartmouth High School. It's been a major focus at Dartmouth High School to really expand our enrollment, specifically though, looking to expand our enrollment to students who might have been underrepresented in years past. So we were specifically looking to encourage students who would not have taken an AP course without that added push. And I'm happy to show or to share this slide here, which shows kind of that flat, you know, for a few years there, it was very flat, and then over the next, over the last two years, you can see that we've made a steady increase. And a little bit later on in the presentation, I'll share with you this current year's projected, and I say projected because until I sit for the exam, I don't really, you know, like to count him in this number, because that is the end goal of the Advanced Placement Program, is to take that exam. So I want to, while the numbers have been increased across the board, I did want to take a second to give a shout out and highlight a few departments that have really taken to this message and really taken to helping us, you know, push the message that with effective effort, every student can be successful in an AP course, because we're really pushing back hard against the mindset of some kids can and some kids can't. We really believe that if, you know, 90% of our students or around there, somewhere thereabouts, are going off to a two- or a four-year college when they leave us, then what better way to demonstrate they're prepared for success at that next level than to have successfully completed an AP course while they're with us? The English Department is an outstanding example of a department that's really taken that message to heart and has really been the tip of the spear in terms of our efforts to expand our AP enrollment. You can see, all the way to the left, it says English Language Arts on this graph here, on this chart here, rather, and that's just a combination of both English Language and Composition, as well as English Literature and Composition. Those are the two AP courses within the English Department. So that, all the way to the left is the total there. And you can see that in the school year 1718, we had 71 students enrolled in English AP coursework, and this past year, we were able to get up to 183. And this coming, the current school year we're in, we're over 300 students in AP English classes. So that, you know, enrollment increase has been dramatic, and it's been profound, and it's really a tribute to the effort of our teachers in the English Department led by our English Lead Teacher, Will Higgins. So we're extremely proud of the English Department for taking to this effort to make sure that we're democratizing access to our most rigorous coursework. Our Mathematics and Computer Science AP participation is another area I wanted to highlight. Again, you can see a similar kind of trend there in terms of the increase from 65 students in our Math and Computer Science Courses three years ago to 111 this most recent, this past year. And again, there's another significant increase that is currently underway at Dartmouth High School, specifically in our AP Stats Program. We're up to 70 students in three different sects, three or four different sections of AP Stats. We continue to offer Calculus BC, as I mentioned. Our Computer Science Principals AP is also dramatically increased at around 60 students enrolled this year. So again, we continue to look to grow our AP program, but our Math and Computer Science Department has certainly done a nice job of helping us to increase our enrollment. And then finally, and this one is near and dear to my heart, being a former history teacher myself, our History and Social Science Department has done a nice job as well in terms of increasing their enrollment. Eighty-four, three years ago, up to 149 this past year. And, you know, you can see that there's still areas, there's some areas actually that kind of were in decline. Government and Politics is one example, but I'm happy to report that this year, because of our efforts in the spring, we're actually up to about 60 students this year in Government and Politics. And we have an eye, Ms. Chavie and I already met with all of our lead teachers to review this data and kind of formulate a plan for where we need to continue to grow our programs. And for this coming year, we're really looking to target AP Human Geography and AP Psychology. Those are two areas that we know we can grow, and we use different data points to kind of determine that, one of them being the AP Potential Report that is put out through the PSAT that we take every spring, or every fall, rather. And so we know from those numbers that we have students who are still on the sideline who could be very successful in Human Geo, as well as AP Psych. So those are areas that we're looking to expand for next year. So with increased enrollment, we should always expect increased performance as well, right? We should expect that, you know, we're not just dumping kids in and then they have a lousy experience and don't perform well. We're very concerned about the results as well. But I want to caution everyone that when you increase enrollment, you know, the enrollment increases first, and then there is some lag before you start to see the results. And the reason for that is because we're, teachers are getting used to teaching a more diverse student population in front of them, right? If you just make AP about the elite students who are high-performing, you know, those students tend to learn in spite of us. But as we're pushing students who otherwise wouldn't have been in AP to take on that challenge, it's a little bit more challenging for teachers as well. And so that's, you know, a couple of years in, our teachers, you know, the performance catches up to the enrollment. But I'm happy to report, as I move on through here and show you the performance, our performance was very strong again last year as well. So here are our qualifying scores over the last three years. You can see the steady increase. Looks kind of like a nice staircase there. Again, 277 qualifying scores three years ago, and we were up to around 374. Actually, when I originally created this presentation, it was in the summer, in July, when the scores first came out, I'm actually happy to report that the 374s up to 378, because one of the things that our AP teachers can do or could do this past year during the pandemic, they got a copy of the student sample, they could review it, and if they thought there was a discrepancy, if they thought that the AP exam needed to have another look taken, they could request that. And so some of our AP teachers did that, and I'm happy to report that four students whose exams we asked to be readjudicated were, and they actually bumped up to qualifying scores. So that number is currently around 378. So again, you can see that as enrollment has increased, our qualifying scores have also increased, which speaks to that belief that we had students who were more than capable of doing well on an AP or in an AP course, who were sitting on the sidelines. So it really just validates the efforts that our teachers and our counselors, and also, quite frankly, our families have put in to really push students to challenge themselves and take the most rigorous coursework. So we're proud of that. Again, I wanted to highlight just a couple of departments. You know, while we are proud of all of the departments, again, the English Department, leading the way here in terms of the qualifying scores, three or above. You can see, just a few years ago, it was 54. We were up to 118 this most recent year. Again, you can see English Language and Composition has had a dramatic increase as enrollment has increased, and then English Lit slid back a little bit last year. I'm not overly concerned, because as I mentioned, we had a number of teachers teaching the course for the first time, as well as, you know, increased enrollment, and so a much more diverse student enrollment, student population. So overall, very satisfied and very proud of the job that the English Language Arts Department has done. Again, History and Social Science, another example of some strong results here. Just three years ago, 81 qualifying scores, and this past year, up to 119. Again, that 119 actually is a little bit higher, because two of those scores I mentioned that got readjudicated were actually in History and Social Science, so that's up around 121 currently. So again, it speaks to the strong performance of our students and our teachers, and could not be prouder of them. I do want to give Mr. Reed, our AP, our Social Studies Lead Teacher, rather, last year, he's actually becoming kind of a utility player for us. Last year, we had our teacher who usually teaches world history was out on parental leave last year, so he jumped in and taught world history for the first time, and you can see, did a fantastic job, just by looking at the qualifying scores there. This year, with the retirement of Ms. Vicente, who was our longtime AP Psych teacher, Mr. Reed jumped in and is teaching AP Psych for the first time this year. So I told him, no pressure, but based on those world history numbers, we're expecting big things out of our Psych program as well. So I thought I would give a little shout out to Mr. Reed, because we certainly appreciate his efforts last year. So that was kind of a general overview. I wanted to talk just specifically for a few seconds here about, or for a few minutes here about the Mass Insight Partnership, because as you know, a couple of years back when we asked to be able to partner, you supported that, and I think at the time you asked that, I come back and report on how the partnership has gone. So last year, in addition to having a pep rally for our AP students at the start of the year, in the spring, we did our, just before the pandemic, actually, we did a recruitment fair, and we talked to the students about the fact that our partnership with Mass Insight, along with the outstanding teachers and opportunities at Dartmouth High School, really lead to AP success. We really believe that. And I think that you'll agree with some of the numbers we have to share tonight. First being 430. That 430 were the number of students who took advantage of either an AP Saturday study session that Mass Insight offered, or took the mock exam that Mass Insight offered to our students. And so that was 430 students who would not have otherwise had those experiences. And one of the nice things about their Saturday sessions is our students get to learn, not just with other Dartmouth High AP students, but they're exposed to AP students from across southeastern Massachusetts. And so I think that that's a tremendous opportunity for our students at Dartmouth High School to be able to have that experience. They also get experience to other AP teachers from across the Commonwealth as well. And it's on topics that AP teachers from across southeastern Mass say, hey, I could use some additional support on this topic or that topic, or I might not get to that topic. And that's how Mass Insight identifies what the Saturday study sessions will be. So again, that was a benefit of being partnered with Mass Insight as well. I do, we do have, we reviewed the data in terms of attendance data, and this is an area that we're focused on improving this year, those Saturday sessions. They started out high, the second session was not where we'd like it to be in terms of attendance. So that's an area that we're focused on this year. The nice, well, I guess, I think it will be easier for students to attend. Obviously, it's not going to be in person, the Saturday sessions anymore. They're going to be virtual for this school year, and they're going to be spread out over a week, as opposed to just one day. So I'm confident that our attendance will improve, and that our students will continue to benefit from those sessions, and certainly from the mock exams, which provided our students good feedback that they could then use to prepare in the closing stretch towards the AP exams. In addition to our partnership with Mass Insight, for our students, our teachers benefit as well. And we had 16 teachers who took advantage of the summer-long institute in July of 2019 now. So those teachers were able to attend the week-long institute at Bridgewater State with no out-of-pocket cost. You know, at Dartmouth, one of the nice benefits is that our teachers do get $1,000 for professional development each year, but this partnership is nice, because it doesn't require any out-of-pocket cost, not even upfront. So our teachers were able to enroll for the summer institute at no cost, no additional cost to the district other than our partnership fee that we pay. But again, our teachers get to take advantage of that week-long experience. They hear from the best AP teachers, you know, across the nation. They oftentimes have sessions that are led by the authors of the AP textbooks. So it's really a phenomenal experience for our teachers. In addition, we had teachers who were able to enroll in the pre-AP Institute, which is, you know, training geared toward making sure that the pipeline is strong. So students in honors and college prep-level courses have real rigorous coursework that prepares them so that it's, they're ready to be successful when they get to the AP coursework. This past summer, so the summer of 2020, obviously had to be virtual, but we had 10 teachers, rather, who took advantage of the week-long summer institute this year as well. So over the course of our, you know, we're just starting our second year with Mass Insight here, we've had about 26 teachers who have taken advantage of the AP Summer Institute Professional Development Opportunities. So again, that's to the benefit of our students. In addition to the week-long institutes, Mass Insight also offers us the two-day workshops in October. And this is, you know, traditionally has been two days where teachers can get out of the building, get away from the hectic pace of the day, and really focus on their own professional learning. At the high school level, it's extremely difficult to find good, high-quality, content-specific professional development. And that's exactly what these two-day workshops offer for our teachers. It's content-specific AP professional development. And I have never, you know, I've worked now, this is being my third school that I've worked at, and all three, I've been fortunate to partner with Mass Insight. I have not met a single teacher who does not come back and rave about the experience that they've had at these two-day workshops. The networking opportunities, in addition to the professional development, is world-class. And so we had 12 teachers who took advantage of that last year. Again, this year will have to be virtual and it will be two sessions for each night for a week. So our teachers will have an opportunity to still get the professional development. It will just be split out over a week and it will be virtual. Part of the, the fee that we pay to Mass Insight, it's a $15,000 fee each year, but a portion of that comes directly back to us. So $5,000 comes, came directly back to us in the first year. And those funds are used to support AP coursework. So in year one with that $5,000, it went for smart TVs for our English Language Arts Department. And again, it wasn't to watch TV, but it was a cheaper alternative than projectors. And so it allowed them to Chromecast and share. Students could share their screens so that they could present, so that they could co-construct essays and, and things of that nature. And so that was how English Language Arts spent their portion of the $5,000. In science, we identified AP Physics as a priority since it was the first year that that course was offered. Got some lab equipment specific to AP Physics. And then Math opted to bolster their supply of graphing calculators. In year two, we don't get 5,000. Each year, it's a little bit less than you get back, but you get $3,000 back this year that we're now. And again, Math opted for additional graphing calculators. In science, we're targeting AP Chemistry for some additional lab resources and equipment. And then English supplemented some, some text resources for the AP courses. In terms of our STEM-related AP courses at Dartmouth High School, and that's how Mass Insight defines their partnership with us, they, they support our STEM-related, including English courses, obviously. But we had a 25.6% increase in exams taken at Dartmouth High School this past year in math, English, and science courses. And just to put that in context for you, nationally, AP courses, AP exams in this, these areas were down 14%. So we saw a dramatic increase in our AP exams taken. And to put into a national context, there was a significant decrease because of the pandemic. So I think this really speaks to the commitment that our students have, the support we got from families as well as from our AP teachers, that when we went remote in the spring without any advanced knowledge, our students really dug in and stuck with it. And I think that speaks to the test, that speaks as a testament to that it takes a community approach that I talked about at the outset of our, of our presentation here. In these same areas, we saw a 21.6% increase in qualifying scores. So again, that's something to be proud of. And that 21.6%, just to put it in context again, nationally, there was a decline of 7% in qualifying scores. So our students really outperformed the nation and obviously built upon an already strong AP program that we had at Dartmouth High School. And, and they did it in the face of the pandemic, which I think just is something we should all really be proud of. Real quick, just the future of Advanced Placement at Dartmouth High School. One of the key messages that I hope folks will take away from tonight and from our, you know, our students as well as our, you know, families at home is we're continuing our push to democratize access to AP. There's a lot of reasons why, you know, from a moral, ethical standpoint, I think we owe it to our students to make sure that the demographics in AP closely mirror the demographics of the school as a whole. Right? In other words, we're not, we're trying to make it so that it's an inclusive AP program. It's not reserved for, for the few. But we want to do it strategically and we want students to really be thinking about a four-year plan. Too often, we still see students waiting until their junior and senior year and trying to cram as many Advanced Placement courses as they can. And that's a recipe for, for failure or, or, you know, to struggle certainly. We want students right in ninth grade, we have AP Computer Science Principles. That is a very accessible Advanced Placement course, and we encourage students to really consider dipping their toe in, in the AP water their freshman year. And that's a course that's available to, to our freshmen. From there, we expand, as you can see, 10th grade, there's quite a few additional offerings. Obviously, 11th and 12th grade have the most. But really, we push students to be thinking about over the course of your four years, you know, start slow and kind of build and, and, you know, everyone's able to handle a little bit different, right? We want people to push themselves, but we don't want it to be so much that you, you have four or five APs in a year and then you're overstressed and it's not manageable for you. So we encourage students to really be thoughtful. And this AP at a glance sheet that you see here is in our Program of Studies. It's hopefully a helpful tool that parents and students can use when they're planning their course of study. Where also, we've worked hard to minimize or eliminate prerequisites whenever possible. A lot of times, and it's not uncommon to see at the high school level where we put in place barriers to our advanced coursework, and we, we really have worked hard to remove those barriers. We have a supportive school, a supportive environment. We have the PACE period available. Really what we need to recognize is that students who are willing to put in the effort can be successful in an AP course. It's the effort that leads to the achievement, not some innate ability, not, you know, not anything else. And then finally, we've really pushed and continue to push this can-do mindset, can-do over can't-do. So often, you know, we, we talk all the time at the high school about the fact that your mindset ultimately leads to your success or to your failure, and that can-do mindset will always triumph over the can't-do. So we're really continue to focus on expanding our AP program. And then finally, this is, uh, these are, this is the projection for this current school year. It's just over 800, though that could have dipped in the first month. We always do, you know, we, we try and push kids to stick with it, stick with it, stick with it. But, you know, we always lose a few at the very beginning typically. So I can update this number, but we're right around 800 in terms of student enrollment in AP courses at this, for this school year. So we're extremely proud of that. And again, it shows that concerted effort to really push our students to take the most rigorous coursework that's available to them. One other thing I should have mentioned was at Dartmouth High School, we were very proud to find, when we talked with a representative from the College Board, that Dartmouth High School actually had the second-largest increase in AP exams taken this past school year in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So while we're extremely proud of that, we shoot for first place at Dartmouth High School. So we're hoping that this coming year, we might just hit that target. But we're extremely proud of our students for sticking it out this, this year. Again, we continue to build capacity with six new teachers this current school year, teaching AP for the first time. We have two new additional AP courses that we offer this year. I alluded to already, AP Spanish Language had a great meeting with Ms. Chavie and Ms., Mrs. Souza, our AP Spanish teacher, our lead teacher in the World Language Department. And that's a, that's a goal of the World Language Department to really strengthen and expand our AP Spanish program in the coming years. We look forward to supporting her work to do that. And we also added AP Research this school year as well. And then finally, before I answer any questions there might be, we're looking forward to offering the AP Capstone Diploma Program at Dartmouth High School. And for folks who might not be familiar with what that is, it's just an opportunity again for a student to earn a credential upon their graduation that shows they are really an AP scholar. They've taken AP Seminar and got a three or, or, or higher. They took AP Research and earned a three or higher. And in addition to that, throughout the course of their high school studies, they earned three qualifying, sorry, four qualifying scores on additional AP coursework. This really speaks to what I said just a few slides ago, though, that you really have to plan. If this is a goal of yours, we support you. But you have to plan for that over the course of four years. No one's going to achieve the, this in one or two years. So really pushing students to be thoughtful and to plan that over a four-year period. Finally, I think, you know, share some conclusions with the committee. I think it's safe to say that the Advanced Placement Program at Dartmouth High School is stronger than it has ever been. Our team, our AP team has already identified a number of areas for growth, and we have plans to make sure that we continue to grow, grow our AP enrollment and to continue to improve our, the number of qualifying scores that we have. We're excited to be offering the AP Research and Diploma Program and feel that it really aligns. The district has focused over the past several years on future-ready students. And I think that the AP Research Program really is so tightly aligned to that. There's no more authentic work than having a student be able to take ownership of a topic they're really passionate and interested about and doing high-level research while they're in high school. I, you know, I don't, I don't know of any other program that would better align with the district's initiative around future-ready students. And then finally, I hope that this point resonates. The success of the Dartmouth High School AP Program is truly a reflection on the efforts of every teacher at Dartmouth High School as well as every teacher within the Dartmouth Public Schools. AP is the end of the line, but when students get there, they've experienced a number of teachers from pre-K all the way up through their AP experience that have prepared them for the rigors of AP coursework. And so we couldn't do it without every single teacher of Dartmouth Public Schools, and we hope that they take as much pride in the, the data that we shared tonight as our AP teachers do at Dartmouth High School. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that there might be.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Tebow, for a well-thought-out and a well-informative presentation. I know I just learned a lot. And clearly, our, our partnership with Mass Insight has paid dividends over the years. So I thank you for that. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to any of my colleagues that have any comments or questions. I'm not sure if anyone would like to start or Mr. Nunes?
Sure, I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Tebow. And I agree with you. It was nice hearing about something besides COVID and being a sounding board for that. So thank you very much for that. Couple of basic questions. With the students taking these classes and, you know, getting the threes, the fours, the fives that they get, they get a chance to get college credits, i.e. they don't have to take certain classes when they get to college. Is that how this is going to work? And how many classes, you know, can, how many credits can they get towards their college education? Or does it vary? What's that?
Delay.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, so I apologize because I'm on a little bit of a delay here. I'm listening through the YouTube feed. But so to answer your question, Mr. Nunes, it, it does vary from college to college. And so, you know, in some college, in, in many state colleges and universities, a three is an acceptable or qualifying score, three, four, or five. But it does vary from college to college. And what, the amount of credit that they get, you know, would depend from one institution to the, to the next would be, would be the answer. But it certainly does save money for students who earn qualifying scores because they can go right into more advanced courses.
I mean, I guess, does somebody have an opportunity to almost take care of, you know, one semester of college in overall in the long run or pretty close to a whole semester, 30 credits?
This is bracelets.
This is.
I had a student who took care of a year.
What's that?
I had a student who took care of a year.
So for a student who was extremely motivated, who planned out their AP courses, you know, like I suggested, starting in their freshman year, yeah, they could certainly earn a number of college credits. And, you know, when they enter, be pretty, be pretty far along.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing, just to compliment the teachers on everything they do. I know a number of years ago, I was here on a weekend. There was something going on and, you know, I was here. And went to leave and there was a, one of your teachers had signed in and that, and this was like nine o'clock on a Saturday or a Sunday night. And that teacher had a full classroom of students, you know, going over things for an AP exam. So not only were the students dedicated, but on a, you know, giving up a Saturday night or a Sunday night, but, you know, the teacher was here too. So, you know, again, my compliments and my thanks to all the teachers that, you know, work at this and the students because it's not easy. I mean, when you look at what, you know, it's always amazes me when you see the students, you know, when they're graduating, what they've done, you know, with co-curricular activities and clubs and still taking however many AP classes. So my congrats to everyone and thank you.
Dr. Jenkins?
So I'm sure Mr. Tebow is probably waiting. He's hearing from, from Mr. Nunes. So should I, should I go ahead or should I wait? I think I'll, I'll go ahead because while he's saying thank you, my question will then come through.
I think so. I think that's reasonable.
All right. So I, I also want to say thank you. I think you guys have been doing a great job. I am particularly impressed by your outreach to get students who might not normally consider enrolling in AP to do that. And, and I like that. I thought the report was great. One thing I might like to see if we ever do this again is the number of students participating. Because like you said, we do have a number of high achievers who take multiple AP classes. And so the real sort of measure of expansion should be the number of students taking APs. And, and that's, I'm, I'm really particularly concerned about that democratization. So I'm glad to see you focusing on that. And I'd love to see that. I have two questions. The first question is, I was glad to see that computer science has moved down to first year. I'm wondering if you've considered moving any of the other AP courses for first-year students like GOPo. You know, I teach Intro to American Politics, AP Geography or AP Psych. Many of the history social sciences could potentially be available to first-year students, and I'm wondering if you guys have considered that? And then I'll wait.
Jonathan, can you just repeat the question again?
Yeah. No, that's. So the, the comment was, I'd like to see the numbers broken up by number of students participating, which would be great. No, the question is whether they've considered expanding some of the history social science classes to first-year students. It was GOPo, Geography, and Psych.
So if, if the question was, have we considered expanding it? So American Government and Politics did expand this current year that we're currently in that we just started. And I don't have the slide in front of me, but I want to say it was like 20 students last year. We're up to 60 this year. You know, and, and certainly, so what we do when we look at the expansion of AP programs is we take that AP potential report, which identifies students that are likely to be successful, and it lists every course that a student is likely to be successful in. And we look at those numbers and let's just. And we look at those numbers, and let's just say, if the number is 100, that means there's 100 Dartmouth High students who have demonstrated that they are likely to be successful on that particular AP course, or in that particular AP course. We use that as kind of our benchmark, and we kind of say, how do we get there? And we identify, we share with the students those AP potential letters. And so the students know, hey, you know, I demonstrated that I could be successful in these four courses. And then we push the students to enroll in at least one of them, if they weren't going to enroll in any of them. You know, and obviously, some of them do enroll in multiple courses. I mean, I'm happy to, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'm happy to provide the number of unique students who participate in Advanced Placement coursework. I can certainly share that number with you. Because I think that that's the foundation of one of the questions that Dr. Jenkins was asking.
That was one. The other, it was, the other was a little bit of a misunderstanding. The way we do it now relies on PSAT scores, and the PSAT happens sophomore year. What about opening up more AP courses to first-year students? Because they can only take one right now. So it's the first-year students.
Opening up AP to freshman students, is that?
Yes.
Right, so, so right now, we have the Computer Science Principles that's open to freshmen. And that's a conversation that we do constantly have with our lead teachers. Every, you know, annually, we review and revise the program of studies. And so if you went back to look at an old program of studies from just three years ago, there were virtually no AP in ninth or 10th grade. I think there was, you know, it might have been just US History as a 10th-grade option. Very, very few. And you can see from the, yeah, the glance sheet that was included in the presentation, we now have a number of them in 10th grade. I know we still only have one in freshman. We're working on it. There's, you know, in a previous school I was at, we convinced the AP Stats teacher, for example, to allow stats for freshmen because it's a very different type of math, and it's accessible for students. And reluctantly, we got them to be able to agree to that. And then when we followed up, you know, some of the most motivated students were those freshmen because they felt like they were, you know, they were special. That was a special opportunity for them, so they were very motivated, eager to demonstrate that they were up to the challenge. So we're always looking at how we can expand AP. And by expand, I don't mean just the enrollment, but how we can make more courses accessible in the earlier years. So it's not all backlogged into the, or shoehorned into the 11th and 12th grade years.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mrs. Wait?
Yes, so I have some comments as well as a question or two. First, I also want to congratulate you and the high school staff for expanding the AP program. I have two students who are at Dartmouth High. Both are doing really well. One is a freshman, taking the freshman program. I think it's a lot of credit to the staff who say, I don't just want the students who may get a five, but I'm like, I really want to bring in all these students who are excited about the subject, and I want to, you know, stimulate that excitement. So I think that's fantastic. Also, another comment, having been, I taught AP, US History. I think having that kind of training that the students, the teachers are getting over the summer and in that October workshop is game-changing. So that is fantastic, that you're committed to that through Mass Insight. I think that's, you know, great. I also want to compliment the staff in the spring. I don't know how many, I assume everybody saw it, but the video that the AP teachers did for the students who are about to take the AP exam was adorable. It was so great. It was, you know, so cute and positive and, you know, we got the teachers, you know, it was, again, it really translated well, and kids got to see their teachers who they missed at home. And I thought that was a great send-off in this kind of wacky time we had. Now, the questions I have are two. One, you had mentioned that you're trying to minimize the prerequisites for some of the AP classes. I look at AP Calculus, and I think about how to get there. So I'm wondering, I know there's been some combinations. So I guess, so one of my questions is, when you say you're limiting the prerequisites, how are you, especially for those AB, now we have BC for the calculus, how has that kind of changed the formula for getting there? And the second comment is, I'd just like to say, I'd love to see macroeconomics come back. I think it's a unique course that's, there isn't anything like it in the offerings, and you did offer it at one point, I taught it. So I'd love to see it come back. So that would be my second.
So I'll tackle the second question first. I too would love to see AP Economics come back. We had, the one thing you can't do, though, is you can't, I'm very hesitant to put someone who's not comfortable teaching it in a position they have to teach it, right? Because we want the kids to have a good experience and to absolutely be prepared for the exam. And in my experience, if you force, you know, I just wouldn't want to force a teacher who's not up to it. We did have some conversation, because again, when we look at the AP Potential Report, economics is one of those that we absolutely need to get back in. So we'll continue to work on that. Because I agree, AP Economics really, you know, is an area that our students would benefit from. In terms of the prerequisites, I should clarify that when I arrived at Dartmouth High School three years ago, that in the program of studies, there were a lot of prerequisites, like student must have an 85 or above in honors level, you know, course. So, you know, it was a lot of those types of prerequisites in our courses. And, you know, I don't think I'm sharing state secrets when I say that grading is somewhat arbitrary at times. And so it's those kinds of prerequisites that, you know, were, or teacher recommendation was another prerequisite that existed quite often. Those are the prerequisites that we've worked hard to eliminate. So we haven't changed, you know, course pipelines. We haven't changed what courses or what course progression students should still move through so much, especially for things like AP Calculus, right? Or, you know, things of that nature. The prerequisites that we've rarely worked to eliminate are the more subjective ones, like, you know, teacher recommendation or a certain grade in a certain course as a prerequisite. Those are the types of prerequisites that we've worked hard to eliminate. Because as we know, there's a number of reasons why a student could do poorly. You know, they could have something happen in their life, you know, in their sophomore year. And maybe they didn't, that grade they earned didn't really demonstrate what they were really capable of, you know, those kinds of things. So those are the prerequisites that I was referencing, that we've worked hard to reduce, or actually to eliminate, really.
Anything else, Mrs. Wait?
No, I think, I think that, you know, really concludes. I guess I would just, again, looking at the, I am curious about the progression to those, again, that math, because I find that the way that we've had math structured and, you know, with students, I know we're doubling up now as, allowing some students to double up in the algebra geometry as they get into freshman year. But again, I am kind of curious about the pathway to get to that, you know, BC senior year and where that actually happens with the math. I mean, the other ones seem like, you know, you could take a, you know, US History course or, you know, other ones, but those need a progression. So that's what I was kind of curious about, how a student gets there, I guess.
So in the math, in the math pathway specifically, we have an advanced algebra slash geometry course that's available for students in their freshman year. We also have an advanced course, you know, if there are juniors who need to kind of progress a little bit quicker. And then recently, we actually just, I just met with Mr. Lauer and Mr. Gill and Ms. Chavie recently to talk about offering, and I know if Mrs. Olivera is watching, she'll be excited about this because her and I have had conversations for a couple of years at this point now. But offering a summer math course that's not remedial and not to recover credits, but a course in the summer that helps students advance, you know, so that they can get to the top of that math, you know, pathway as well. So that's currently where we're at.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't really have any other questions. My colleagues asked some pretty comprehensive, well-rounded questions. I just want to thank you for this presentation. It is encouraging to see the program grow and the value of the partnership that we have. So that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Yeah, I will just echo my colleagues' comments and statements, Mr. Tebow. You know, looking back from 2016 through currently 2020, I think the numbers speak for themselves with the increase of student participation in AP exams. I'm thrilled. I have a freshman here at Dartmouth High. She was a little reluctant to take the computer AP course, but I'm hopeful that she will get on board with at least one of the other ones come sophomore year. But that being said, you know, one of the things that really echoed to me in your presentation is, and I think it's, I think it's extremely true, and you hit the nail on the head, and I think that's what makes Dartmouth Public Schools such a great experience for our, you know, for our students as well as our staff, is you said the success of the DHS AP program is truly a reflection on the efforts of every teacher at Dartmouth High School as well as all within the Dartmouth Public Schools. So I think that, I couldn't have said that better myself. That just goes to show you, you know, it's a, it's a team effort, and, you know, everyone helps our students get there. So kudos to you, Mr. Tebow, as well as to your team and to all the teachers here in the Dartmouth Public Schools. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a Resolution 21-01, Request for Unpaid Leave. I'll turn it over to Dr. Gifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, you received a request from one of our TAs in the building requesting an unpaid leave. The original request, she is, she is out on leave right now. The original request was not able to be granted by me because it is not something that's in their contract. So they do have, she does have, so to be consistent with the contract, I was not able to grant that because they do have certain items that they're able to request and be granted an unpaid leave for, but that was not one of them. And she did take advantage of the item H under Article 9, which says, "Other leaves of absence may be granted by the committee." I believe you have her letter.
We do.
So if you were to grant the leave, it's been suggested by Mr. Smith that that leave is granted through the end of the school year, not like from this day going forward for a year, but through the end of the school year. And we have no problem with that. Ms. Miller's been a wonderful employee. It's just, if I was to stay by the contract, it wasn't something that I was able to do.
Sure. Understood. Do any of my committee members have any questions in regards to this resolution? Dr. Jenkins?
We were provided with the resolution. Do we need to read the full text of the resolution? Is that why we were given it? Or can we just make a motion? Sometimes you have to read the full text of a resolution. Sometimes we don't. I'm just sort of asking how we proceed. I don't really have a question about it.
Yeah, no, that's actually a very good point. I don't know if it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary. I know when, I know when we do MSBA resolutions and all, they're very explicit, and we have to read them, but we can certainly just have a motion to approve it.
Okay, so then, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that the committee approved Resolution 21-01, which is granting a temporary unpaid leave of absence to Ms. Miller for the remainder of the 2021 school year, as requested and in accordance with the DEA assistance contract.
I second that motion.
So I have a motion on the floor by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mrs. Amaral. On the motion, any other discussion? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question. She does state in her letter that, you know, if we either have to go fully remote or if we're able to come back fully in person, she'd like to request revoking this request. Is that something that's out there for her? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Any other further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, under Old Business, Superintendent's Update on the start of the hybrid phase of school. Dr. Gifford?
Okay, thank you. Yes, as you probably know, we had a successful start. I say every day is a new day. So last week, when we brought our students in, our pre-K peer partners, K1, 2, and Grade 6, I know a number of us were at all of the schools to see them come in. And it was really, first of all, it was really joyful to drive through the, coming to work and seeing kids standing at bus stops. It was almost like, wow, you know, it was very, very, very good. So we had a good start. Teachers were extremely happy everywhere I went. I just have to give a shout-out to every building, as well as transportation, the nutrition department, everyone that worked so hard, and the planning that went into this. I mean, if you saw some of the pictures on our Facebook page of kids getting their lunches and all of that. But just to see the number of staff members that were out to greet students as they get off the bus and/or parents drop them off, et cetera. So we had a, we had a good start, and we'll see, you know, every day is a new day. So I think with, with that said, I just have to, once again, give a shout-out to Mr. Kylie and his assistant Lauren because the transportation, as you might know, is a bear to plan for. They're not only planning for what's happening right now, but thinking ahead of when students continue to come in. And even though you ask people to provide their information in a timely manner the day before, when we still get 50 emails of changes, is pretty much crazy, I guess, you know. But they've done a fantastic job of trying to accommodate all of the families. So that went pretty well. We know we'll have bumps as we go along, but we're here to try to solve those. So what I will say, one of the things I want to say also is that as we move forward, I want folks to understand that we will have people that are sick, and we already have had folks sick with normal flus or whatever it might be, or stomach aches, et cetera. Our process is that the nurses, if it's someone in school, the nurses look at the symptoms that people might come up with, take caution, abundance of caution, perhaps send students or staff home. Always the recommendation is to have a test if it's certain symptoms. They let us know what's going on. If a test were to come back positive, which, as we know, we had one that we thought was, we're still waiting the negatives and all of that. We are in complete, in always frequent contact with the Board of Health, with Chris Mischu. We let them know what's going on. They advise us constantly. We cannot give out information about staff, the only thing, or students. So what we do is we provide a general comment to the staff that might say, if it's a particular school, a member of our school community has tested positive. And then we are in contact, which I confirmed tonight, Mr. Kylie, with Chris Mischu, with the Board of Health. We assist in any contact tracing that might go on. We might say that staff member was in a room with so many students, et cetera, or a bus, et cetera. And then they will do the contact tracing alert with families. So I just want to make that clear, because we've had questions about, why don't we give more information? We cannot give personal information. We will give, again, general information, that there's a positive case. We follow all protocols, and we give out what we can. So I just want to make that clear for people. We don't even say if it's a staff member or a student. It's a community member, a member of our school community, and let the process be followed through. So I just want to make that clear, but we're on it. So I think, speaking about that now going forward, I think our plans are very well-thought-out and being implemented as far as being in school. And we're well-prepared, day by day, for these things that will come up. And we're well-prepared, day by day, for these things that will come up because we know they'll come up. People are sick every day, you know, and we just take those precautions that are necessary. We also wanted to address, we had some questions about when kids are absent. So, that's a tricky one because we thought, for example, the elementary students we would be able to put into our virtual academy, but we're really going to analyze that because we don't want those, we don't want that to be a shuffling ground either for kids if it's, let's say they're sick and they're out two or three days, but then they're back again. So, I talked to Mr. Tebow today about the high school plan, and I've actually, I'm waiting for some comments with Mr. Dome, but we think that pretty much, we'll treat a lot of it as a normal illness. Students are out ill with other things, that teachers will continue to maintain their Google classrooms. Assignments will be able to be accessed, especially at the high school, for example, they'll be able to bop into, if they were on quarantine, I'm speaking of something like that, be able to bop into the pace period to get some help, et cetera. And of course, when they do come back, have plenty of time to make up assignments and reach out to their teachers. So, we're looking at it like that. And a lot of our situations, as you might know, are case-by-case. We analyze what's happening. We speak with the parents, et cetera. So, not only with that, but even with students now being, maybe having a fever, et cetera, do they come back? Do they not come back? So, it's, a lot of it's case-by-case. But I just want people to know that we're prepared. We understand the scenarios. We understand the process. We're in constant contact with the Board of Health. All right. So, the other thing I wanted to address was, I guess our biggest challenge right now, of course, is, again, the TECA issue. So, I've asked Mr. Galishaw to speak about that because fortunately or unfortunately, he's had to take a huge, he's playing a huge role in TECA coordinator, if you will, beyond any role he should be taking, as we know. He's extremely busy. It's beyond, but because of his real positive attitude, he's really, but he's been able to really get a good handle on TECA itself and analyzing and trying to support the middle school guidance councils as they support our teachers. So, it's not all bad, but there are some bumps and grinds, and so I'm going to let Mr. Galishaw kind of speak about that.
Okay. Just to give everyone a brief history, just so you know, in July, the Department of Education realized that the state was going to need an online alternative to those students that are staying home. They compiled a committee and they came up with some recommendations in early August. The models they came up with were independent self-paced learning like Edgenuity and certified teachers that would teach kids with an online program like TECA. There were two other companies that were sharing that. So, the mad rush went to do that. We, it went on August 4th. A few days later, it was decided we would go in a certain direction. And on the 11th, at our school committee meeting, Dr. Gifford presented the relationship with Edgenuity. After looking at Edgenuity from a middle school standpoint, we felt that it was not, independent self-paced learning was, may not be advantageous for middle school-level students. They might need a little more attention. And we switched gears to TECA, which is a certified teacher. One of the difficulties, at the same time, we created our own program. Thank you, Tracy Olivera, for creating a program of our own virtual teachers for our elementary school students with our own curriculum that we're very proud of. The, it was comprehensive to do that at the elementary, middle school level because you need multiple grades and multiple subject matters to do that. So, TECA was a good option. We came in fast and furious with TECA. I think part of that is I've learned a lot, and I think when we do TECA in January, it will be a lot smoother. It was a bumpy road trying to get the, find the contacts at TECA, who does what, and in fairness to them, we came in very late there. But also, there were a lot of technical issues in the sense that they mentioned that the Chromebooks would be sufficient for those students to use, but some of the technical issues didn't play very nicely with the Chromebooks. So, we resurrected the PCs around the buildings, boosted RAM, redid their software, and got, we're getting them to those families. I've been visiting the families at their homes. It's been very nice. I don't go inside, social distance on the front lawn, but able to provide other Chromebooks that might be, because the products that they use have a lot of Flash and Java, which don't play as nicely on Chromebooks as they do on a PC that has a processor, et cetera. So, we've played through that. We have 54 students at the middle school that are currently working in that. And with access to the console now, I'm able to monitor, as the guidance people are able to monitor, these students as they progress. We're noticing that they've got to play some catch-up with lessons. The clock began when they began the program. I still have technical issues. I deal with these families unable to print. The machine is not working properly. I'm still having access issues, trying to either remote access or also bring them another machine. We don't use the old PCs as much anymore since all the kids have Chromebooks in the district. So, the PCs are available. We just, we kind of Frankenstein them, as we call it. We take parts from many PCs to build a good PC, and we provide those to the students, I mean, to these students. So, I'm still working through the technical issues. Learned a lot in the process. The kids are working, the program is quite intuitive. It shows where the children are in regards to their progress. I think we've learned a lot about TECA, too, that may not have been completely in the literature, that we really have to be an active role in the process of TECA in regards to monitoring these students and checking on their work. It wasn't as much to push them off to some other teacher. There is a teacher out there. And some of the feedback I've gotten from parents in the program are changes to the TECA program in regards to the number of times that they meet, the number of live lessons and such like this, the structure of it, which I'm going to provide to TECA for updates in their program. But this was their program for those students that are currently doing it. This is what their program does. Perhaps a reevaluation for next semester may be in order. We've had some teacher, some students, some families that have reversed and gone back to the hybrid model. They've reconsidered the structure of what we're doing in the schools, the cleanliness of the schools, and they've opted to get out of the remote version and go back to the hybrid model when it becomes available. With that, any questions? I am a wealth of knowledge when it comes to TECA and virtual learning.
You and me both, Mr. Galishaw.
Yeah, that's right.
That being said, first question that I have is, where the Dartmouth Public Schools is allowing families to revert from TECA if they've made that decision? And I know that's kind of based on DESI guidance and recommendations that there are, we are allowing families back into the hybrid program.
Mr. Oliver, initially, those, like, past couple weeks, but it's getting to a point now that the continuity of the education is going to be disrupted if you hop, if you jump over from this point forward. So, I understand that, to make that mention here, but I really feel the middle school and the guidance department should examine the students' situation to make sure there's not, you haven't done half of a year at TECA.
It should be on an, right, on a strictly individual basis.
Right.
With that said, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna speak up a little bit here. I am disgusted at the way that the Department of Education sold or investigated some of these remote programs. I have family members in another school district that opted to go for TECA, one of the middle school and one at the elementary school. And I don't know how clear it was that TECA made this, or whether it was TECA, or was it was Pearson, or whether it was the Department of Education, but to have, I think, a lot of families, and I can see a lot of families frustration in Dartmouth, that there are only two 30-minute live lessons a week per subject. And out of those two 30-minute live lessons, one of them is recorded. So, there's only one 30-minute live lesson. I have got a huge fundamental problem with that. When we are selling this, we're trying to, like, offer this as a solution to Dartmouth families that don't feel comfortable, for one reason or another, to send their students into the hybrid program in the Dartmouth Public Schools. And shame on the Department of Education for not making this clear upfront. There has been poor communication coming from them in addition to TECA in Pearson. The conversations that we had with them after school started with TECA should have taken place weeks before, weeks before. This baloney that we're dealing with right now, that every district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is dealing with because of their lack of guidance and lack of communication is outrageous. I really hope that come the spring semester, that the Department of Education and Commissioner O'Reilly and the depart, and the board is much clearer with their alternatives to remote education. Because I'm telling you right now, this is completely unacceptable for the students and families of Dartmouth and the students and families of TECA students across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It may be a very good program as a alternative, you know, for those students that may not want a traditional education for whatever reason, but they were inadequately prepared for COVID-19 and for all these districts signing on board. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Galishaw, and the central office team, and for the guidance staff at the middle school for making house calls, for, you know, getting involved as much as you have. Because I am, as a parent, as an educator, and as a school committee member, I am extremely disappointed with this decision.
I feel as though we've had better success. The high school had experience with Edgenuity, so they hit the ground running. Mr. Gill knows it. He knows his kids. And the students at the high school are familiar with self-paced programs, and the guys department does, they knew to check in. TECA gives you the impression that they take it from here, and it truly is Edgenuity 1.2. It's just a step up from Edgenuity. It is an independent program, such as the IEPs, Mr. Oliver. One thing I developed, realized in the process, they say they do IEP services. They don't. They do, they'll do accommodations in regards to large print or something, but that's not really accommodating an IEP. So, we learned, we've talked to special education teachers within the middle school to make sure the IEPs are addressed within those students that have them in our 53, 54 student.
I think the biggest problem, I'm sorry, one second, Dr. Jenkins. I think the biggest problem is that I don't think the Dartmouth Public Schools, nor many other schools, realize the time consumption and the burden that this program, because looking at it now, and I can't speak for Dr. Gifford or anyone else, is that it may have been worth a while to try to figure out something else because this is extremely time-consuming. I've heard from my niece and nephew, who are in another district, who's in TECA, their teacher, one of their teachers has 48 students, and they can't meet the 504 obligations.
Right.
We're sorry, we can't meet them. So, I'm extremely frustrated from a number, a number of levels. Dr. Jenkins?
So, I just want to reiterate that because I think on social media, a lot of people were saying that these issues were the result of, oh, we decided too late. I have a colleague who is in Plymouth. They decided, like, the week after the guidance came out, and their students were added into TECA after ours, right? So, this is not an us issue.
No.
It has very much been a TECA issue. They are, they were overwhelmed, I think, and completely unprepared for the volume of students, and they had major difficulties handling and processing it. And shame on them, too, because then they simply started the classes rather than adjusting and saying, hey, maybe we'll delay, we'll do some other stuff. I do also, though, as a teacher, want to, I think, push back a little. People are saying, oh, well, people who are, you know, in the online learning at the middle school and the high school are doing so much more work than the students at the middle school or the high school. And I think that's because they forget that when you're in a class, right, and you're, that's like work, that's time on task. And so, yes, you are going to have more reading or things to do because you're not sitting in the classroom. You're doing more reading because that is your time on task. So, there's this misperception, I think, that it's too hard, but I think parents are forgetting that if you spend X hours a day in a class and you're not having that live instruction all the time, students have to be doing something, and commonly that is reading something or doing assignments or things like that. So, I mean, I 100% agree with you that I think this was, this is not an internal problem, this is an external problem, and I think it's really important for people to understand. And it goes up the food chain between the late guidance with DESI and the TECA being completely overwhelmed. It's not been a good situation, but there hasn't been much we can do about it.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to say, we had considered doing TECA for the elementary schools because we needed someone to take the students from there. And I just want to give credit to the professionals within our ranks here in Dartmouth, the elementary school principals that got together to talk about it, and Tracy Olivera, who got together with them, and Dr. Gifford, of course, and Mrs. Roy, Ms. Roy, and to talk about it. Because the program we created here, we should sell to other people. It was a proper program. We, Ms. Olivera was able to find five teachers that would take over the virtual program. We set them up in an area of Quinn Elementary School. We equipped with all their information, their equipment and such, and they hit the ground running, and they've gotten great reviews. It's our own program. So, we're going to bottle it, and we're going to sell it to someone else, but I'm so happy that they got together to examine this rather than just jumping into TECA. And it is that blind faith in, as you said, Mr. Oliver, just in DESI, to say, they suggested this program, but it really wasn't tested. It wasn't proven, and it wasn't explained in great detail of what it was. So, but I just wanted to mention that I'm so happy the program that was designed at the elementary level.
I've heard, I don't know if my colleagues have, but I have heard no complaints about the elementary school.
I've heard compliments.
Yeah, nothing but positive, nothing but positive feedback.
Except positively at the high school.
Yeah, and at the high school, too.
The high school, too, yeah.
So, can I follow up one thing? I also want to give kudos to Mr. Gill. He has been doing a ton, a ton, a ton of work, and we have one child in Edgenuity. He has really done a bunch of work. I'm sure you've seen some of it to really get that all going. He's super responsive, and he's doing a really, a really great job. So, kudos to him on that.
Good, good.
Mr. Noons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on what you're saying with DESI and everything else, I mean, I think to say that they dropped the ball would be a complete understatement. I mean, when, in all seriousness, when the governor shut everything down the end of April, you know, for the, for the school year type of deal, I think at that point in time, it kind of became obvious to everybody that what was going to happen in September was not going to be pretty as far as, you know, were we going to be able to get students back into the classroom and that? And all the different guidances that they came out with, and, you know, well, we'll have something next week, we'll have something next week, we'll have, you know, next week, next week, next week, became the middle of August when they finally came out, or just beforehand, when they came out, you know, the end of July, and they said, well, by August 11th, we need your three plans type of deal, and how are you going to do it? And everybody had, literally at the 11th hour, is scrambling to find, you know, what you're going to do and who's going to operate it. If we're not, if somebody can't be in school, then who's going to operate and how we're going to do, operate it? I think it goes back to, a little bit, to what Mr. Tebow was saying in his presentation on AP, is the work of the teachers and the administrators in this system from pre-K to 12 that have done the best that they can to get this program up and, to get everything up and running. Whether it's students in hybrid, and I've talked to, you know, parents, you know, that have students in the hybrid in elementary and middle school, you know, sixth grade. I mean, that's the only one that's bad. Everybody is thrilled the way the hybrid has worked so far. They're thrilled to have their kids back type of deal. And, you know, and again, shame on DESI because they personally, they dropped the ball from day one. Personal opinion.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Nothing on that. No, no. I think that's, no. No, I think we're good.
So, I do have a couple of things, if the committee would just entertain me for a few minutes here. First of all, I First of all, I think we've all said it many of times, but I honestly don't think it can be said enough, the monumental task that the staff and faculty here at the schools, Dartmouth Public Schools have done. I'm still proud of the decision that we made as a committee to do a slow roll. I think it was, I truly think it was the smart idea. I think we're slowly rolling things out and things are coming together. I am extremely, I'm really pleased, I'm happy to be a Dartmouth School Committee member, I'm happy to be a Dartmouth parent, and I'm thrilled to have these professionals working for us. That being said, I know that there's been some scuttlebutt on social media, there's always, let's face it, there's always scuttlebutt on social media, right? And not social media, but just general comments from, I hear from, as we all know, parents, staff members, students talk to us about just the safety, the general safety of, you know, making sure that our kids are students, my daughter included, will be safe in the Dartmouth Public Schools when they, when they're back in in-person learning. I think, I think it's important to note that, you know, first and foremost, I think we all agree, is that it's, student safety is the number one, the number one priority. I know that, I had, I had an email yesterday that after it was notified that there was a potential or there was a positive case here, there was a list, I don't know if it was in the Standard Times or Mass Live, one of those, and it had the list of communities and it said Dartmouth Zero, and someone said, well, they're not being transparent. Well, it was because of the, it was because of the cutoff, the deadline. I think it's safe to say that this committee and this administration is extremely, you know, we're nothing but transparent, and we're going to continue to be transparent with this community. One of the things I'd just like to just touch base on with Mr. Kylie is that there's been some back and forth about, and of course, a lot of this comes from our staff, staffing, concerns being in the rooms, about heating, ventilation, air conditioning, air exchange. I had a conversation, I had the opportunity to have a conversation this afternoon with Mr. Kylie, and obviously, the perfect solution right now is that all, it's warm enough, all our windows are open, we're able to circulate the air in addition to our UNI vents that are in, our air circulators are in most of the classrooms. But I think it's important to note that we're, Dartmouth Schools are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on HEPA air filtration. I know we spoke about this a little bit, but I think it's really important for the people at home to know, the parents to know that come the time in which we can't have windows wide open and it's 30, 20 degrees outside, that, you know, we're going to have HEPA filtration in all our classrooms, we have the electrostatic sprayers. Can you, can you just talk a little bit about what we're doing proactively, Mr. Kylie, to keep our, our students and faculty and staff safe?
Sure. So, as you said, Mr. Oliver, I mean, we're committed to providing air purification in the rooms. At this point, I would say that it's very challenging to acquire air purifiers, especially ones that will work effectively in a classroom environment. Smaller units are more readily available, but I ordered some air purifiers in, I think, early July, and they were supposed to be in in September, and now we found out they're going to be in in March. So, that gives you an idea of the type of, you know, backlog that these companies are facing, and obviously, those may be of no use to us and we might end up canceling those. But we, at this point, have acquired 60 air purifiers and distributed them on a priority basis to the nurses, the isolation spaces, the staff members who have physician's notes indicating that they should, they should have an air purifier, and then classrooms and other spaces that don't have windows. So, we're prioritizing those areas and at the same time, making efforts to acquire more air purifiers so that we can outfit all our rooms with air purifiers that do have HEPA, that multi-stage filtration, including HEPA. So, that is sort of an ongoing process, and our hope is that by the time it is, we're into heating season in which it's no longer feasible to keep the windows open, that we'll have those in place.
How are you doing?
Certainly as soon as we can get them. So, that's what we're working on there, and, you know, we've, we've worked on the ventilation in terms of tricking the, I think I may have discussed this at a prior school committee meeting, but essentially tricking the UNI vents to take more outside air. Again, good measure for now, but not a measure that's going to last forever because when it gets too cold out, if we do that, first of all, it's going to be too cold in the rooms, second of all, we're going to freeze the pipes and we're going to just break the whole system. So, so there is a point where that, you know, that can't be done, and it's a ways off still. So, but, but good filtration is certainly something that we're, you know, efforting to accomplish in all the rooms at this point. You mentioned, you mentioned sprayers, but really, it's about disinfectants. So, it's about, well, it's about good hygiene first of all, right? So, the hand sanitizer available in all the rooms and around the buildings, that's an important step because that helps keep us from spreading our, whatever germs we have all over things. But then disinfectants can be applied in different ways. Wipes. We've delivered 600 and, I don't know, I just looked, now I can't remember. I have so many different things here. You know, 621 tubs of wipes around the district for folks in classrooms. We've got disinfectant spray in every classroom, so handheld disinfectant, it's not Lysol, but it's basically like a Lysol disinfectant, kills SARS, EPA List N, kills SARS-CoV-2, which is this. We also have the electrostatic sprayers, which we recently, we got in last week and we're setting up. We had a little glitch with the chemicals that we ordered and the right quantity not coming in, so we've had to sort of reinvent that process and go with a different product. So, so we're working on that.
But we do have the product.
Yeah, we do have that product. We have it in concentrate form, so we now have to set up a little differently, the way we're going to be, the way we're going to be addressing that in each of the buildings, but we're in the process of doing that so that we can spray classrooms nightly. So, we've worked with, I've spoken with AFSMI, the custodial union regarding the opportunity and if it becomes necessary for them to work overtime in order to be able to support cleaning of the classrooms with the sprayers. I built monies into the coronavirus relief fund grant that we received to support that. So, to support those staff members working overtime to make sure the classrooms are clean. And then obviously during the day, we've shifted staffing so that there is more custodial coverage during the day so that they can keep, keep track of the high-touch areas and try and maintain clean, you know, cleanliness throughout the buildings during the day. So, it is awesome to have kids back. I mean, it's, it's been so long, you know? Six months in these buildings empty is too long, but, but it does, it does present all these additional challenges, and I think we have a good plan in place, and what we're finding is that, like, like our kids, we're learning every day, you know, and we're learning about, okay, did we think about that plan correctly, and we'll adjust and, and as we go, and, you know, make sure we provide the safest environment possible, so.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the update.
So, I just want to say this is great, I think it's fabulous, but I'll say it to our home audience, the single most effective thing that you can do is follow guidelines for preventing community spread, right? When the disease is not spreading in our community, it's going to be less likely to spread in our schools. I'm a little nervous, there's been some uptake in community spread, and I tell you, I may have lost my temper a few times. I've seen people socializing and it takes everything, right? There's an article in the New York Times, that playdate, that, you know, just one friend, that's what creates community spread. If we want our kids in school, then we've got to be responsible for that as a community. We need to wear masks, we need to stay away from each other, it's hard, it stinks, but if we don't do that, then our kids are not going to be able to be in school. So, it's on us, and we have to do all those things, but those things are way more effective if COVID is not getting in the front door, and that's on us to do. And I think people are letting their guard down, and now is not the time because I don't think, I know my kids would be crushed to go to school and to have to stop going to school again. So, I think we as a community need to pick it up and we need to do better to make sure that our kids and our staff can be safe and be in school.
Excellent point. Mr. News?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, to piggyback on what Dr. Jenkins says, and I know we've talked about it before, but the onus is, is on the parents, is on the students. If you're not feeling good, don't come to school. And, you know, as dumb as it sounds, I mean, if, you know, the student, if your son or daughter gets up in the morning and they've got a little bit of a temperature type of deal, don't pump them full of Advil or Tylenol and say, well, now they're down to normal because as soon as it wears off in a couple of hours, they're in trouble, and we're in trouble. For 24 hours, if it's a 24-hour bug, keep them home, please. You know, help us, help you, help everyone, and we'll all be better off.
I like that, help us.
Actually, I'm going to shift away all the, you know, from the safety, because I have another kind of point that parents have brought up, you know, and again, I want to get back to what Mr. Oliver said earlier, is I am really proud of what Dartmouth has done and is doing, and I'm really proud of the model, the every-other-day hybrid. I think, you know, I've talked to families and friends who, you know, they're in schools where it's a week on, two weeks off, you know, and they're doing remote. And I, and again, I think with teaching and learning, to get back to what Dr. Gifford had said, you know, back when we talked about the plan at its onset, you know, this is, this model, this plan is, you know, best serving our students to really keep them connected to their teachers and to their classmates and to the content. But with that said, I do have a number of parents, and I, just, just so we can answer this, because I'm sure some of you are getting the same, like, email over and over again, why can't we on that opposite day that the kids are at home, why can't they zoom into their classrooms? I, for me, you know, when I look at this as an educator, I want educators to be focusing on the students that are in front of them because I think that, you know, they're going to do the highest quality live instruction, that, you know, method, but I think if you can, you know, speak to that a little bit more, just because again, I keep finding that same question, why aren't we zooming in, why aren't we, why can't we do that? And I think, you know, I think the way that we've, you know, we're going forward is, you know.
All I'll say is, we investigated it with the middle school, it would have been a different model because the technology-wise, it was, it was going to be a big undertaking to do that, but also, if the teachers are teaching the same lesson, so to zoom in on the hybrid day, I guess they could change their entire thing, but it's just something we decided not to do. They're also not condensing, if you will, the standards and teaching almost double. That's, that's what we've asked them to try to address things because kids are going home to be able to work on the projects and all of that and the reading assignments, et cetera. So, you know, it's just, I don't know if you have anything else to say, it's just kind of the model we chose.
Can I add to that? I know, so I have a lot of my colleagues in higher ed who are doing the HiFlex, we call it, in higher ed, which we say is the worst model of education there could be. It has been really, really, really difficult. It's not, you just zoom in, that's not how it works. You have to completely redesign the entire curriculum to integrate, there's technological issues, so like, you know, they've got five different things up trying to figure out, and then they're not really instructing to the kids. So, at least from a higher ed perspective, and we don't have to do, like, you know, we're doing three hours a week. HiFlex has been a real, really sort of disastrous on very many levels. So, people think it's like, oh, you just zoom in. That's just not how it works pedagogically. I think, can I, if I could follow up on that too, the other thing that I'm saying is people saying, well, are they only getting half the instruction? And I, that's also not true because people assume that the teacher is just up there lecturing all day, but so much of teaching is about providing instruction and then working independently to learn and reinforce and practice what you've learned. And so, what we're just doing is separating that, right? You're getting the, the live instruction in class, and then you're doing the independent reinforcement and practice of those lessons. So, we're not giving them half of the instruction, it's just half of the instruction is happening in a different place.
Right.
I think that's really important because that's the other thing I say, oh, they're only getting half a school year. That's, that's what's happening, that's not happening.
It's a little difficult, yeah.
And just, you know, just to piggyback on, you know, that I've had, you know, again, you know, I've tried to kind of explain like, you know, model lessons to parents that, you know, again, and there's, there's time that's lost by kids coming into the classroom, you know, and there are certain things that, you know, you're going to want to use your manipulatives in class with your students who are right in front of you if you're doing a lab or, you know, something else, whereas, you know, there's going to be so much loss for the kids that are, I mean, they can't do the lab, so they can, you know, and they've gained skills during remote learning where they can potentially, you know, do breakout sessions or work in a project at home with someone else in their class. So, again, I'm really proud of what the model that we came up with, I, you know, again, as I go back to, you know, other people are saying, well, you know, my kids are going to zoom in, I just think, oh, that's not going to be that great, you know? So, again, I just feel like, you know, congratulations, I think you did a great job.
One of the things we did do, I know when I went around the schools, the elementary level, have the kids come in on the morning meeting, so they just touch base, say hello to their friends, so that was, when I talked to a lot of teachers last week, that was very successful. So, that was one, I mean, it's not the all-day, but at least it's a touch base.
I think that's good, yeah, the mornings, yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to mention what you talked about with the data or whatever, data point, I don't know if you said it was in the Standard Times or something about the number of cases. So, just to make it clear for folks, DUCY requires us if we have a confirmed COVID case to call in that information. They just ask whether it's a staff or a student, who we are and what school. So, we did that, you know, last week, we had one, I'll just say once again, a member of our school community that was positive, but that member of our school community had not been in our schools at all up to this point. So, there was no close contact, et cetera, but that was reported to DUCY. Then we had the second member of our school community that was positive, we've reported that, we reported to the Board of Health, they did any contact tracing, which was, as far as I understand, very, very, very minimal. Since then, we've been told that was a false positive, we're waiting for those results. So, DUCY with that data, it's every Thursday that's updated from my understanding. So, that was not reported until October 1, and so it's every Thursday, that was September 30th, the day before.
Exactly.
Which was zero. So, we corrected the false positive, so from what our reporting is, we should have one community member now being positive.
For the next round.
Because I talked to them today about the, yeah, that's, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, we, we don't hide it, we do what we're supposed to do.
I have no doubt.
Yep.
Any of my fellow committee members have any other questions?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'll go. I wrote a bunch of scattered notes here, typical of me. One cute thing I saw on social media, a positive thing on social media was.
That's good and positive.
Well, it was a shout-out we had done for a member, I think she is a grade-two virtual teacher, and her, her goal, and I paraphrase, summarize, I'm not going to verbatim, but her, her goal, so what is your goal? Her goal was to get a job, you know, obtain a job in education during a pandemic, which I thought was, was funny. So, and there were some comments on there from presumably parents of students that were just, you know, accolades of, we love her, so clearly that's going well. I've heard from a lot of families about that. My own experience, remote, you know, I have a fifth grader at DeMello, and shout-out to Mrs. Kolbeck, it is, she, I'm very fortunate that my little fifth grader, my baby, she's already a fifth grader, is an independent learner, she's really motivated, so I understand, I recognize that I'm lucky in that respect, but she is having the most amazing time and, you know, she, I'm lucky again to work from home as well, so I'm fortunate to be able to do that, and she'll come out and she'll hug me on her break, you know, so it's been just such a great experience. She though, she loves it, but she's excited to go back. And, but I have been hearing from families who are like, ooh, it's next week, you know, put on the brakes, and we mentioned this earlier, is there any sort of case-by-case, I think you alluded to it, or have we cut off any, if maybe their family member is sick? I think you alluded to it, uh, or have we cut off any, if maybe their family member is sick or if they've had reservations based on a new diagnosis and one of, you know, they're having reservations about sending their kid back? Is there any chance that they could go full virtual or is that just a no, um, moving forward? I don't know if there are many of those left.
We haven't had a no yet, I mean.
Okay, so it's a case by case?
Yeah, we've had a handful of folks, but it's been kind of back and forth. So it's kind of evened out the numbers with the virtual. Um, you know, we're trying very hard, uh, folks might have to be on a, a waiting list of some sort if, if it comes time because logistically we might not be able to fit people. Let's, for example, and this is another big complaint against DESI, they're racking up. But a number of my colleagues as well, you know, they had us create this model of education according to certain guidance, only so many kids in a classroom, six feet, only so many kids on a bus, et cetera, et cetera. So you work and you plan all of that. And then for those folks that didn't, based on also how many folks were not coming back. So okay, those kids are in hybrid, um, excuse me, remote, et cetera. So, and all the districts set some kind of guidelines, like we tried to do, um, at a, at a, at a grading period, you could come back. Or, and the elementary really was stay in it all year because unless there's some certain circumstances, really no need because they're on the same curriculum, we hired the teachers, et cetera. But now DESI, a number of, um, from what I understand, colleagues have had parents then complain to DESI when the district said, I can't fit you in my cohort. We've already done, and DESI has said, we cannot legally hold them out of coming to school. Um, and I know it's back and forth either way to virtual or here. So all I'll say is once again, we haven't said no to anyone about a switch, but sometimes it's pretty difficult to make. So we, we just work with everybody to the best we can.
No, I think that everyone's done a great job, monumental task. In terms of the TECA with, um, the special education, I, I have heard parents and I've read some comments and I've heard from some parents, of course, they all, you know, that they, there, there are some generic sort of modifications. Uh, obviously it's not anything comprehensive or personalized, even individual. Um, how are we specifically handling that? Cause I can just imagine that is, um, really stretching the limits of, of, of who we have to help in those areas for those students. So how, how has that been going?
Right. I, from my middle school conversations pretty well, they have one specific special education teacher assigned to grade six and it's mostly the greed, uh, grid, B grid services that they're working on. So I know, check in with those kids, et cetera, making sure that's happening. Um, and I do understand that the other grade levels have special education teachers working with those kids. And especially with the related services, so we don't have that many.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so my conversations with the middle school, uh, that it's being accounted for and dealt with.
Excellent.
I'm not saying it's perfect.
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that. Um, you know, this is certainly just crazy. Um, let me see. Have there, um, have there been any sort of concerns or complaints around, uh, I don't know, have we, we've had a couple of cool days. Have there been any concerns with kids being too cold in the classroom with the windows open or anything like that?
No, well, I haven't heard anything, no, not, not yet.
Yeah, we're preparing for it in my house.
We've had some nice warm weather, so.
Yeah, we're a lot, been lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're layers for now.
We're layers. Um, and then in terms of, and I'm sorry if I should know this already, but, um, a picture, a picture came across my Facebook timeline of my son on, um, I forget what you call them, my son with disabilities, uh, uh, during probably an OT or PT session with some classmates, an old photo, gosh, he must have been in second or third grade on, um, oh, I can't think of what you call those little things on wheels that you just, scooter boards.
Scooter or something, yeah.
Are those, is that equipment, sensory rooms, is that equipment able to be used for the students that are in there? And how are we accounting for keeping all that stuff clean? I'm thinking of, of.
Some items we've purchased, like the smaller items, we've purchased extra, but also the bigger ones, um, we've told, and actually it was in our MOU about cleaning equipment, that we have cleaning product there. So let's say, let's say a swing, for example, a larger swing that it can be used. But we've made it clear, there's no way that we can be on a schedule with a custodian coming, running around every single time a student uses it. So there's cleaning product available for the teacher to wipe it down if they, um, I know, um, one of the, at the pre-K, K, Cushman, she's got the monitors assigned to cleaning some things. So I guess it's all hands on deck really, but, but the equipment is able to be used.
Good, yeah, that's.
And as you know, with the regular classrooms, especially the elementary, we bought, um, like shoebox full of various items for their kids. So they have their own boxes of.
Their own items, yeah, if you will, yeah. Um, no, I think, I think that's all I have. I, I just, yeah, I commend everyone, um, the, I'm thinking of littlest learners, I saw a picture as well on social media with the desks and the mat next to the desk to show the space. And those children don't know any different and, and the colors are so bright and I'm sure that the, the, um, the feeling and the, of the emotion of the, the cheer and, and the welcome, you know, from the teacher is probably wonderful. So it looks, it looks good, so thank you, thanks, thank you. Thank everyone, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaro.
You're welcome.
All right, gets next up on our new business, uh, request to vote to approve utilization of school choice funds. And, uh, Mr. Kylie will handle this or would you?
Yeah, uh, first before he does this, I just wanna provide a little update on our enrollment right now. Um, so we have a hundred and nine school choice students right now. Thirty-two in grade nine, thirty in grade 10, twenty-three in 11 and twenty-four in grade 12.
Thirty-two in grade nine, huh? You said thirty-two in grade nine?
Yep, thirty-two in grade nine, thirty and twenty, yeah, I know. I figured that we were their best bet, I don't, so a hundred and nine.
We'll take it. Thank you.
So in, um, in the spirit of your conversation that, that we had, uh, I think last year regarding school choice and the desire to, um, bring at least large school choice expenditures to the committee, I wanted to make sure that you were aware that for the last, this is the third year that we've been funding the lease cost of, um, our one-to-one initiative Chromebooks, uh, from school choice. So it's just under eighty thousand dollars, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents that we, um, had planned on funding from school choice funds and hope that you'll support continuing to fund from there. So we bring that forward tonight. Right now there's, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents in the fund. Um, so obviously we can, you know, we, we can support that through this, uh, at this point. And, um, so it's for your consideration and discussion and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. It's the final year of the lease payment.
I was gonna say, so are these dollar buyout leases or fair market value?
Um, Jonathan, are they dollar buyout leases? I think so.
Dollar buyout or fair market, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, yeah, we own them once this is done, so.
Excellent, thank you. I'm, no, and I think it's important, I know that, uh, several of us had that conversation last year regarding school choice funds. Um, uh, anything, anything, I think, you know, over ten, fifteen thousand dollars, we asked you to bring in front of us. So I appreciate that you did that, um, so, uh, Chair will stand a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we authorize the, uh, expenditure of school choice funds in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents, um, for, uh, Mr. Kylie's memo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. News, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any other discussion? John?
So if we've got a hundred and nine students, that's another five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars coming in this year on top of this. So it'll be good.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Thank God for small favors.
Yeah, actually, that's a good question. On, on the discussion, just out of curiosity, um, actually I'll ask after the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. When do we receive, cause I know it's a reimbursement program, Mr. Kylie, so it's based on October 1 numbers.
Yeah, we receive it gradually throughout the year.
So it's, it's paid in gradual increments, thank you.
It used to be, it used to be December and March. When I was in, when I was working, it used to be like December and March, but who knows what they've changed.
Okay, but the money we're receiving this year is based on last year's numbers, right? Okay, Dr. Jenkins?
So I would like to, we don't have to have this discussion tonight, but at some point in time, sort of have some discussion about what our plans are for that money. I mean, I personally, I don't necessarily see it as a rainy day fund. I mean, it's raining right now, right? And so if we've got, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in there when it's like pouring, right? Like, this would be the time that we use it. Or I would like to see us use it more regularly and aggressively to do things. I mean, that's part of, I think, why we have it, um, is to do some of the nice things like mass insight and Chromebooks and stuff like that.
And our lab across the way.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is great stuff. And so for me, that's part of the reason why I voted for school choice, is so, so we can have funds to do the sorts of things we don't normally have. So I'd love to have potentially some conversation about what our plans are for that money, um, maybe down the road. Because I don't necessarily want it to be savings to backstop stuff. I want it to be, I mean, we should ask the town when we need that stuff. This should be stuff that does, good, good stuff for, for our schools.
You know, and maybe the, the springtime, as we look to, um, you know, what the spring is gonna bring us after the January 1st.
We might need it to keep.
We might need it, yeah.
How do, how do we support, you know, how can we do above and go above and beyond, uh, what we are doing to support students? Mr. Kylie?
I think that we would expect this upcoming budget cycle to be particularly challenging and a good opportunity to utilize some of those funds in a way that we haven't in the past. But just so you, it, you may recall that in January we brought to you, um, I mean, January seems so long ago with all that we've been through at this point. But, um, we brought to you a list of expenses that we had either already expended or planned for school choice. So I agree, it should be used for those things that really can, you know, supplement, um, what we can do otherwise. And things like, um, funding the iSTEM program, uh, which I'm not sure, you know, how much of that we'll be able to do this year. But hopefully we'll be able to do it in some form. The, lots of professional development that comes out of there, instructional technology support. Again, funding one-to-one computing, strength and conditioning programs, um, renovations in the buildings that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do, lots of stipends for staff to do things that are, you know, really extra, uh, special for, for kids. So, I mean, those are some of the things that we had planned on using it for and had used it for in the past. And I think we'll, you know, certainly continue and hopefully, uh, funding is such in the FY22 budget cycle that we can still just, you know, use it for those extras. That's my hope.
I would, I would agree. Mr. News?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personally, what I'd like to see if we're gonna, you know, use this, is kind of use it not in an operating budget type of deal, but of, you know, one-time things or certain initiatives. Because I mean, if this money of it dries up, I don't want it to be a bu, a budget plug. So that if it dries up now, we're scrambling to, to plug that hole. So personally, it's, it's something that I would like to, you know, like one-time thing. You know, we're making payments on the Chromebooks, well, that's fine because we got them, type of deal and things of that nature. And the list that Mr. Kylie just went through, I'm good with those. But that's my, just my, my two cents on the matter.
Sure, I, I have no problem with the committee's, uh, you know, input. We can maybe put this on the agenda in the next month or so and we can have a further, a little bit more of a discussion on it.
Yeah, I mean, it may make sense to wait till we know what the state budget picture looks like to have that discussion, but sometime, yeah.
They're hoping for the end of this month.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna hold my breath.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Can at least stop, you know, start a conversation about it and then wait to see what the numbers look like.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, everyone should have received in their packets, a proposed school committee. Uh, dates through December 2020. Any comments, questions, concerns about the dates that were provided to you?
I'm good with them.
Good, I'm good.
We all good?
That's fine.
We're good.
Easy enough. I think I just lost my agenda. Thank you. Uh, and the next up, uh, superintendent's, uh, update.
Okay, a couple of things, once again, non-COVID related, which is nice. Um, the middle school on a society had an induction last week. I think you may have received a poster perhaps in your packet of the number of students, I think it was thirty-seven students. So I was able to attend that virtual, um, ceremony. And of course Laura Gardner did a nice job as usual with those students and preparing that ceremony, so that was nice. The high school on a society virtual induction, um, will happen October 15th at seven o'clock. So I'm sure you'll get some information on that if you wanna check into that one as well. Uh, we also have an announcement from Jean Sheridan, our Director of Food Nutri, of Nutrition, that we were awarded a grant in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. It was from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And this is, um, really to keep fo, folks eating. So her plan is to purchase machinery to be used at Quinn and the high school. Um, it's about sealing packages and food transport and increased refrigeration at DeMello and carts and other, um, materials like that. So it was funny because she sent us the Baker Polito announcement and she hadn't even been told she got the grant yet. So now she has been, so that's good. Um, also just wanted to provide a quick update, our, our sports program. I'm really happy that we were able to, um, let kids play and, and you know, again, we, every day is a new day. So, uh, we've completed two weeks of practices and advancing to game competition this week for field hockey, soccer and volleyball. Golf has played three matches and we are, what, one of the things I like that, um, we're doing is we're kind of keeping all the kids because we don't know what might happen, especially with, with COVID cases. You never know about quarantine, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, in a couple of the programs where we'll have a, a varsity level as well as two JV that will split the season and each play some games. Uh, volleyball included, three levels, two competitive and one developmental, so keeping kids there. Um, and cross-country will be competing in meets with all the team members. Football starts tomorrow, believe it or not, with cheerleading and unified basketball. As you know, that's in the planning stages for whatever they call it, the wedge season, the fall season, the floating season. And everybody has a name. And as far as music updates, and I mention these because of course, um, these were programs we started even before we started hybrid and getting kids together and you probably saw some as you came in. Uh, remote learning, instruct, instrumental and vocal classes are going well. And of course Ian says the teachers have done a great job, which we know. And elementary and middle school general music classes have adjusted to the remote format. He's, uh, been working with teachers to produce some nice online resources for students for remote. And of course, they were very happy to get their K-2 students back. Marching band has been divided into three smaller ensembles for the fall season to meet the state guidelines. And percussion and winds groups just completed their first two weeks of virtual evaluation, which you prob, again, I always step on Mr. News's toes, I think.
I'm good.
Our color guard program just did the first video performance. And, um, we've been invited to participate in something, Mr. News, a live streaming event in October, uh, with some of the top marching band programs from across the country. So those are just some of the fun highlights other than, like I said, COVID.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Gifford.
You're welcome.
A quick question, uh, around sports. Are we, uh, are we allowing fans in the building for any kind of games or? Okay.
That's been our, our decision that we, and I hope you support that because I know a couple of communities are now starting to do that and it was a little pressure. But to have to be responsible for masks and then contract tracing, I think our, our goal should be to provide a program for the kids and not have to worry about those other things.
I 100% agree with you. I ask you that because my daughter's, uh, playing volleyball.
You wanted to come.
Well, no, 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 volleyball. And I, and I guess there's a scrimmage, uh, against New Bedford, um, next week. And she's telling me that New Bedford's allowing fans.
Yes, they do.
Which, you know, I, that's, it's kind of disappointing.
Yes, it, when I, from what I understand from Andy Crisafulli, we, when we said no fans, all the other districts followed suit. And now with a little pressure from powers that be, they've switched it. And he let me know that last week and I said, no. Our focus is on keeping our kids safe, we do not have the personnel to maintain, you know, to watch everything and.
I just have serious concerns that our teams are gonna be playing. I just have serious concerns that our teams are gonna be playing, if, you know, in, in New Bedford, in a red zone right now, where their, where their cases are. So, you know, I would ask you to, to, you know, have a conversation with him and put a little pressure on New Bedford, because I, I disagree with that, and I'm surprised that Meyer, you know.
I agree with you.
Even allowing that, so. I have nothing else, anyone else for the good of the community, good of the committee? Uh, next meeting, uh, next meeting, what's that?
October 19.
Yeah, Monday, October 19th, 6:30 in the Dartmouth High School Media Center, right here.
No executive session tonight.
So, yeah, and there's no executive session tonight, so Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Dr. Jenkins, on the motion, any further discussion?
Go pass.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, oh. It's been so long since I hit that gavel.